Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our board meeting. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States. Under God, in the physical liberty and justice for all.
Amanda, will you call the roll, please?
Trusty Messick?
Here.
Trusty Raco?
Here.
Trusty Sheehan?
Here.
Trusty Casera?
Here.
Trusty Lotner?
Here.
Trusty Zora?
Here.
President DiCipio?
Here.
Quorum is present, sir.
Thank you, Amanda. Good evening, everyone. It's a privilege to be up here, and as I always start out, one of the privileges I have as President is to recognize community members and people in our community who have gone above and beyond in their extraordinary things in their lives. And tonight, I'm here to recognize two individuals from Lion's Township Cross Country Team, Danny Kilray and Vince Zona. Both of these individuals are All-Staters. They finished second and 13th in the state past Fall in Deadwiler Park in Peoria at the state meet. Danny went on and went to the Nationals. He went to Regionals and won Regionals. And then he went out to Oregon for the Nationals and came in 13th as an All-American. So I'm here, Tom, we're here, Tanner, both of you gentlemen here tonight. So I'll start with Vince, if you would come up, please. Coach could not be here. I didn't hear from him. And I'm not going to mention my son Jake, who was a coach, because he didn't want me to. So we won't do that right now, okay? And ask my son, who I'm so proud of. Okay. So Vince, whereas the Village of LaGrange Park wishes to recognize and pay tribute to certain individuals on the talented Lion's Township Lions Cross Country Team, whereas Vince Zona has been an inspirational leader and mentor to his teammates throughout his four years, whereas Vince and Zona can proudly graduate having finished seventh in state seventh in state and earned All-State honors, whereas earlier this year Vince and Zona set a new school record that hadn't been broken since 1972, lowering his LT Deadwiler record to 14 minutes, 22 seconds, intensive seconds, and whereas the Village President Board are proud of Vince's running accomplishments and wish to commend him for representing his school with honor, integrity, and skill, whereas the Mayor and Village Board would like to extend a special thanks to the coaches, family, and friends who have helped Vincent achieve this success. Now therefore be proclaimed that Vince and Zona can be commended for his outstanding achievements in the sport of cross country and as a student athlete. Congratulations, Vince. And also on the effort of your accomplishments. Picture you crossing the line.
So just want to say thank you. This is, this means a lot. It was a really special season, and we had a lot of fun. So it means a lot to be recognized, and thank you.
Okay, next up, Danny Kilray. Whereas the Village of LaGrange Park wishes to recognize and pay tribute to certain individuals on the talented Lion's Township Cross Country Team, whereas Danny Kilray has been an integral part of the Lion's success, leading to numerous wins, whereas despite two stress fractures, Danny Kilray has shown great perseverance and has overcome his injuries to become second in the state as a junior and earn All-State honors. Whereas Danny Kilray recently set a new school record with the fastest performance in Lion's Township history at Deadwiler Park with a time of 14 minutes and eight seconds, whereas Danny Kilray followed up his first place finish in the Midwest Regional Meet with a 13th place finish at the Nike Cross National Meet, Cross Country National Meet in Portland, Oregon, earning him All-American honors. Whereas the Village President Board are proud of Danny's running accomplishments and wish to commend him for representing his high school in our community with honor, integrity, and skill, whereas the Mayor and Village Board would like to extend a special thanks to the coaches, family, and friends who have helped Danny achieve success. Now therefore be proclaimed that Danny Kilray be commended for his outstanding achievements in the sport of cross country and as a student athlete. Danny, congratulations.
Nice.
Vince, it's a special privilege. I mean, Vince, congratulations. I didn't know you growing up. I knew Danny. Actually, when Jake was running earlier on, Mrs. Kilray was carrying you. And it was just a privilege to see you growing up and to see the individual that you are right now. And to hear my son Jake come back and say, man, you gotta see this Danny Kilray. This guy's awesome. Congratulations.
I just wanted to thank you guys for taking your time out of this night to do this. It's just really special to us, knowing that someone's rooting for us. And it means a lot for, to us.
Aren't they great young adults? You know, Lion's Township has an awesome program that they built in cross country, and it's such a privilege to recognize you guys for your accomplishments and bring some recognition to that program. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have public participation. If anyone would care to address the board, step up to the mic and give us your name and address.
Good evening. Sherry Sauer, 1525 Alima Terrace in LaGrange Park. And my business on 31st Street, Premier Design and Cabinetry. And I'm the president of the LaGrange Park Chamber. So, tonight, I'm going to just make a couple of comments about the proposed sales tax. It's been talked about for quite a while, for many months now, in regards to the TIF. The businesses are very excited. We can't wait until it can happen, because it will improve many things in LaGrange Park, including bringing in more businesses. Emily Rodman has addressed the chamber meetings several times. She's addressed our board meetings in regards to this and the sales tax increase. So, being that Westchester's 10%, Brookfield's 10%, LaGrange is 10%, I really don't see an issue where we, to go to 10% would be a big deal, especially when it means such a great improvement for our business community. And then, as I said earlier, Brandon, if you throw in some shoveling in front of our storefronts, it'll be a really big go. So I say yay for that. And I don't see any other businesses here, but I just, I just think it's wonderful to get this TIF. And I think 1% is pennies for what it's going to do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Before we move on, I've been remiss. We do have an individual with us tonight who is joining us from the Youth Commission, Will Akins. Welcome, Will. And moving on to administration, Trusty Lotner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, this evening, there are two items under the administration area. One is for discussion only regarding the Business Development District Implementation for Proposed Sales Tax. I'd like to move that, we move that to, to the Commercial Development Committee for discussion later on in the agenda.
Moving on to our discussion purposes, anyone care to address? Are you thinking he's going to move it? On second?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. And for the second item is regarding some discussion and action regarding the Village Personnel Manual update that was provided as part of our packet. And a little bit of background on that, the purpose of this discussion is to consider amending the Village's Personnel Manual to incorporate new regulatory requirements, include policies recommended by Irma, and expand policies regarding hiring of relatives and update other various provisions to reflect current practices. Background regarding this topic is that the Village Personnel Manual in its current form became effective on May 1st of 2003 and was subsequently amended on November 27th of 2007. Due to recent regulatory changes, certain provisions of the Personnel Manual need to be revised and, in some cases, new language added. Some non-substantive changes have also been included to clarify provisions or reflect current practice. The proposed substantive changes include addition of statement regarding Compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act, addition of language regarding No-No Child Bereavement Leave Act, addition of language regarding Illinois Firearms Concealed Carry Act, addition of language permitting annual driver's license review of certain employees, addition of policy regarding the disclosure of personnel, personal relationship, and modification of policy regarding travel and training. Our village attorney has, in fact, reviewed these proposed changes and amendments to the Personnel Manual. And as some of the regulatory changes became effect, or will become effective subsequent to our approval, effective January 1st, 2017, the staff recommends that the Village Board approve the amendment to the Personnel Manual as attached. The proposed changes have been included in our packet, and after reviewing the changes, they certainly do, in fact, seem to be appropriate. And as such, I would make a motion to approve the Village of LaGrange Park Personnel Manual as amended.
Second.
Fair of motion, second. Discussion, Trusty Lotner.
And as I mentioned, you know, in reviewing these, they certainly make sense. They've all been reviewed by our village attorney, and I would fully support this motion.
Any other comments from the board members? Seeing none, Amanda, call the roll.
Trusty Messick?
Yes.
Trusty Raco?
Yes.
Trusty Sheehan?
Yes.
Trusty Casera?
Yes.
Trusty Lotner?
Yes.
Trusty Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda. Well, I will get better at this. So, do you have any comments from the Youth Commission? Thank you. And thank you, Trusty Lotner.
And that concludes items up for discussion and action this evening from the administration area.
Public Safety Committee, Trusty Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have two action items tonight. The first being new ambulance purchase. The Village is in need of replacing its 16-year-old ambulance, number 1214. Our current frontline ambulance, 1215, is also nearing seven years old. Based upon the amount of use it gets and the increased frequency of repairs needed, it is time to move ambulance 1215 to a secondary or backup response role. As such, the fire department staff has been pursuing the purchase of a new ambulance. Purchasing the new ambulance will allow for us to sell or trade in the 16-year-old ambulance, number 1214, when the new one arrives. And our current frontline ambulance, 1215, will then be moved to that secondary role. Earlier this year, following the passage of the referendum for fire department vehicles, personnel were tasked to begin planning for the purchase. Our EMS Division Chief, along with various other department personnel, began to discuss the needs related to the next ambulance and began to evaluate various models, chassis, and options for a variety of manufacturers. A couple of our personnel met with vendors and manufacturers and evaluated vehicles at the Fire Department Instructors Conference earlier this year, and vendors were invited out on a few occasions to bring various demo models out to us to evaluate. Following this process and upon recommendation of our EMS Division Chief, it has been determined that the Fire Department and Village would be best served by the purchase of a Type 1 ambulance built on a Ford F-Series truck chassis. Furthermore, again, after careful evaluation, staff would like to purchase an ambulance manufactured by Horton Corporation, which is located in Grove City, Ohio, and which would be purchased through Foster Coach Sales located in Sterling, Illinois. The total cost of the ambulance is $222,147, and the unit is available through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. As such, the vendor, Foster Coach, has gone through an RFP process with the Purchasing Cooperative in the Northwest Municipal Conference. The process is very thorough, provides competitive bidding, and meets all applicable state laws. There is an administrative fee of $750 for using the Suburban Purchasing Process, Cooperative, which is already included in the total cost of the purchase. This year's current fiscal budget includes $260,000 in funding for this purchase. In addition to the proposed purchase of the vehicle, a purchase of a power cot and loading system is being brought to the Village Board under separate cover. There is, will also be additional associated expenses related to purchase and sale or trade-in of our existing ambulance, which need to be considered in the overall cost. As such, there is a following breakdown of costs. The ambulance itself, $222,147. Cost of lettering, estimated at $3,500. Radio is estimated at $1,200. Guaranteed trade-in value of $6,500. When we add the next power cot and loading system, it's $46,353.60. And then there's an Irma rebate of $15,000, which gives us to a grand total of $251,760.60. Again, as noted, $260,000 was budgeted for the purchase of this project. An additional information, including recommendations, justifications, specifications on the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, there is attached documentation. So after careful evaluation and consideration, staff recommends entering into the agreement with Foster Coach Sales of Sterling, Illinois for the purchase of the new Type 1 Ford Horton Model 623 ambulance. Therefore, I'd like to offer a motion to purchase a new Type 1 Ford Horton Model 620 ambulance for the cost of $222,147 from Foster Coach Sales of Sterling, Illinois through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trusty Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is what we went to referendum for, one of the, one of the promises we made to the people of the Village and the residents, and I fully support it. And on top of it all, it comes somewhat under budget.
Any other comments? Trusty Raco?
Yes, I just would like to thank the chief and the department for doing all the work to determine which ambulance to get. And it looks great to me.
Will? Chief, any comments?
No, we're purchasing a, what we believe to be a very good ambulance. As you can see, it's not inexpensive, but it needs to last 16 years. That's what we estimate. So it is one of the most advanced and well-respected companies and ambulances out there. So I appreciate the support of the Village Board, appreciate the support of Rick Kornowski, our Division Chief of EMS, who led up a lot of the research. And if you have further questions, let me know. Thank you.
Obviously, chief and chief, retired chief. It has all the levels needed for our current cooperation with the LTAC system.
Yeah, there's other stuff that's not included in here, and it's already part of LTAC. One of the additional items, you know, first of all, our equipment from a medical standpoint right now is up to date. Eventually, you know, down the road, a few years, we'll have to purchase some new equipment, but we've been keeping up through support of the board, through support of staff. So most of our equipment just switches over. The other thing is, as part of the LTAC communications issue, we will have MDTs, or mobile data terminals, that'll actually be in this ambulance that we bought under a separate purchase for all of our vehicles, so that they will communicate directly through the computer in the field with the LTAC CAD system.
Thank you, Chief. Amanda, call the roll?
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry, Trusty Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions for clarification. I think that our department historically has, has shown that they certainly have a tendency to use equipment like this well beyond its published duty cycle, which, you know, has been very helpful for the, for the Village. I guess I'd like to hear, what is the projected life, what's the published projected life of a piece of equipment like this compared to what we've typically used in the past?
I don't know if you want to answer that, Rick. I, we believe, from what you've presented, is we'll still get 16 years out of this as long as we get into a secondary role after eight years.
Yeah, usually, if you look at, like, on the old ambulance that you're looking to replace, there's 100,000 miles, you're going to be on it by the time you replace it. So if you look at engine hours, if you kind of, if you kind of take a figure of, for every mile you're driving it, it's going to sit, it's going to idle, it's parked in front of a house, the motor's running. So you're looking at probably from a mileage, from an engine mileage standpoint, you're probably looking at about 250,000 miles on it, because it continues to idle. So you're going to see, as time goes on, the maintenance costs change. And when you constantly run that out the door every day on 1,500 calls, plus all the fire calls, plus all the duty that they do, it starts to take a wear. So some communities could replace those vehicles every five years due to what they do to that. We've seen pretty much that, once you start pushing ours over the 14, 15-year mark, you start looking at bigger engine transmission vehicle items that become more costly. And we try to keep that back down, so that when it's time to trade that in or get it, we're going to look at trading, we did look at trading it in, we're going to look at brokers to see if they want to take that vehicle. But their, their ideas to us are, it's harder for them to sell that vehicle once it gets over 100,000 miles. So we want to keep that thing under 100,000 miles at the time we want to get, you know, at the time we want to replace it. So that's kind of our goal, because then the price goes down. Because who's going to be in the market for a 16-year-old 100,000-plus-mile vehicle? It's usually going to go into, you know, a plumber or some non-emergency service type of thing. So I think we found the best that, when we keep these things and we use them for eight years in the frontline capacity, we have enough backup use for it to go to secondary calls, or when the initial one is having serviced onto it. And once you get to 16 years, it's ready, it's tired. And the one we got back there is pretty tired. So it's, it's time to push these things around. The medium-duty chassis, the ones that we have now, that was a great thought process, but even to use that chassis today, they put so many different conditions requirements on it, it's really pricing you right out of the ballpark. That chassis that we have now on the ones is another $25,000. And it's just not worth it. It's really just not worth it. So we took a step back a little bit. This should be just, this should be great.
Yeah, if I-
That answers your question.
Yeah. If I can just add to that, you know, we did discuss the chassis in depth with a number of different people. There are some communities, larger fire departments that actually have more responses or close to our responses, that have gone to a gas engine. And they've looked at that, but they're turning those vehicles around every five years. We're sticking with the pretty big heavy-duty diesel engine. We do, you know, they look at the rating of the chassis versus the amount of weight we're putting on. It has to meet those specifications for a number of different agencies. So between the diesel engine and this vehicle, we think we're in good shape. We did look at another product and a gasoline engine that some of the other communities have purchased, but again, they're replacing it quite frequently, or more frequently than us. And we have one of our personnel's a diesel mechanic, that's all he does all day long. And, you know, between him and one of the manufacturers, they said, you know, between eight to 10 years, you would probably have to redo the engine on a gasoline vehicle. So we anticipate this to last the life of what we're looking for.
Great. Thank, thank you for your thorough explanation, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments? Seeing none, Amanda, call the roll?
Trusty Messick?
Yes.
Trusty Raco?
Yes.
Trusty Sheehan?
Yes.
Trusty Casera?
Yes.
Jake Lotner?
Yes.
Trusty Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, item number two. Purchase of power cot stretcher and loading system for the new ambulance. The Village say, "For the cot portion, as we've already discussed, the ambulance itself, it basically allows for EMS personnel operating in the field to mechanically lift the stretcher up and down by use of a battery-operated motor for the loading portion. The loading mechanism also mechanically lifts the stretcher portion into the ambulance and locks it into place in the vehicle. These types of power cots and loading systems have now been on the market for several years with several neighboring communities already using them or in the process of purchasing them. Staff had already been considering purchasing this equipment for our existing ambulances prior to the purchase of the new ambulance. In fact, we applied for complete grant funding for such during the last two annual grant cycles of the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program and have now been success, or up till now have not been successful. In preparing for the purchase of the new ambulance, staff reached out to Irma, which has a program to offset a portion of the cost of the equipment, and we were notified we were eligible for such to an amount of reimbursement of $15,000. Much additional information is contained in the attached documentation, justification memo, and related documentation. The following, though, is the cost breakdown through the Irma reimbursement program. It should be noted that this purchase, along with the proposed ambulance vehicle purchase, under a, under the separate agenda item, remains less than was allocated in the fire equipment bond fund for the current year's fiscal budget." So, the breakdown is the Power Pro XT Stretcher and Power Load System, $46,353.60, with the Irma grant deducting $15,000, for a total of $31,353.60. The recommendation, again, is recommending the purchase of this from Stryker Corporation. Therefore, I'd like to offer a motion to approve the purchase of a new Power Pro XT Stretcher and Power Load System from the Stryker Corporation for a cost of $46,353.60.
Have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trusty Messick?
Again, this is, it's, it's an ancillary purchase that came in under as part of what we've, the residents agreed to pay for. And I will say, and said this is all part, again, under budget, as mentioned. And, and I would say how blessed we are to have the staff on a paid-on-call department to do this kind of research and work to get this in, as well as the, looking for the grant funding and all. So I fully support.
Will? Any other comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out, I think this is great, because this does go to the avoiding lifting and loading injuries to reduce the risk of that, and that is worth every penny in the long run. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Amanda, call the roll?
Mr. President?
Yes, Trusty Lotner. I am so sorry. Trusty Lotner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions. What is the load limit, weight limit, on this device? And is it the max that's available?
The Division Chief probably knows off the top of his head, but I believe it was 700 pounds?
Is it, is it pretty much the maximum, or there, is there another model that's even heavier? Granted, you probably won't have that requirement often.
You know, there is a stretcher that, that, there is a stretcher that is used in the bariatric unit, but you couldn't apply that to this, because the unit, the vehicle has to be built different. So this is, this is the weight limit. So if, if we had to have a, and we have had that situation come up at one of the nursing facilities in town. And in those cases, we have to notify a private service to come in with that vehicle. It's a different, it's, it's different. Once you start getting over that weight, it, it becomes much, much more dangerous to do any form of lifting. So those stretchers usually don't lift. They're, they're pulled through, you know, with a winching system. So, because the number of people, you can't get enough people around the stretcher to lift it.
Okay. And kind of a clarification, I don't think we had any device like this. We currently don't have a device like this.
No. No, there are, we, in the, we did consider in the grant founding purchase, the purchase, the stretcher portion that just, that lifts the carriage up, so you can, so you don't have to lift. But the loading device is, I would say, in the last, it, it was very, in its infantile stage when we ordered the last ambulance. when we ordered the last ambulance. So you kind of want to see how that maps itself out. And it's moved in the direction that the ambulance standards in the future will require some form of this. So we're kind of getting ahead of the game.
With this device, is it possible that we might be eligible for a reduced insurance rate for our EMTs as a result of having a power device and not having a power device?
Um, you know, I don't know, that's a self-insurance, that's more of an Irma question. And I, and I don't know how they determine our risk and pool for that, but I think the important thing was they saw, Irma did see the increase in the lifting and lifting injuries and twisting injuries, and has put together a program, not only in training, but to give you some form of rebated grant funding for going in this direction. And that's what we took advantage of. So I don't, I couldn't answer the Irma portion of that.
I can add a little bit to that. Rick's exactly right. Irma recognizes the frequency of the incidence of back injuries related to ambulance calls, which is why they provide this particular program, which is really one of the few equipment reimbursement programs that Irma offers. So there is no opportunity for a reduction in the insurance rate that we pay, or the coverage that we pay through the intergovernmental risk pool, because our participation in the risk pool is based upon revenue base and experience with our claims. So those factors together are really what determines our annual contribution rate. And they don't give carve-outs or exceptions for particular pieces of equipment. But Rick's right, that's why they offer these grant programs.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Can Amanda call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lottner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda, and thank you, Trustee Messick.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Before we move on, Will, I understand that the chief took you on a tour of the fire department yesterday.
Yes.
How did that go?
It was very detailed.
Do you like our fire department?
Yes, it's very nice.
Good. Thank you, Chief, for doing that. Okay, Public Works Committee. Trustee Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items tonight. First one, we'll start off with tree maintenance program contracts, one-year extension for tree removal, stump removal, general tree maintenance, and emergency tree work. One-year extension of the current tree maintenance program contracts through fiscal year 2017, Village needs contractor assistance to remove dead parkway trees, removal of tree stumps, to perform general tree maintenance and emergency tree work. The assistance is based on the limited equipment and the resources that the Public Works Department has. The village's current contractors, Winkler Tree Service and A&amp;B Landscaping and Tree Service, have agreed to hold their fiscal year 15, '16 rates through the end of fiscal year '18. The current tree service contracts will expire April 30th, 2017. Due to the Emerald Ashmore infestation, there is a high demand for tree contracting services. Staff believes that this is best, that this is in the best interest to retain the services of the current contractors as their fiscal year 15, '16 rates. Staff recommends approving a one-year contract extension at tonight's meeting. Therefore, Mr. President, there's documentation attached that we've all read, and make a motion approving a one-year contract, contract extension with A&amp;B Landscaping and Tree Service, Inc., for tree and stump removals, and with Winkler's Tree Service, Inc., for general tree maintenance and for emergency tree work, and authorizing the village president to execute the necessary contract documents.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Question, Trustee Sheen?
I think it's great, the relationship the village has with these contractors, they do great work. And it's kudos to Director McLaughlin for being able to negotiate them. This is the third year in a row we've done this. And, you know, where else can you go and have the same price locked in for three years? So kudos to Brendan and staff for being able to get them to agree to this. And the quality of their work, they do good work, and it's just a shame that we've lost the amount of trees that we have, but I'd definitely be in favor of this.
Thank you, Trustee Sheen. Any other comments? Brendan, did you want to make any comments?
No.
Will?
Um, yes.
Great, thank you. Amanda call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lottner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next we have the 2017 Road Bond Fund, Edwin Hancock Engineering Agreement. Engineering agreements with Edward Hancock Engineering for the 2017 Road Bond Fund are being presented for village board approval. These agreements include 2017 road paving program and the 2017 resurfacing of Harding Avenue. Next year's budget will include the 2017 road paving program, for which the village engineer, Edwin Hancock Engineering, will provide professional design and construction engineering services in an amount not to exceed $483,000, and the 2017 resurfacing project of Harding Avenue, for which Hancock Engineering will provide professional design engineering services in an amount not to exceed $65,000. Funding for this work is included in the fiscal year 2016, '17 budget. In order to be ready for both the projects in the spring of 2017, it is necessary for design engineering to begin in January 2017. Staff recommends approval of these agreements at tonight's meeting. Therefore, Mr. President, make a motion authorizing the village manager to execute, one, an agreement between the village of the Grange Park and Hancock Engineering for professional design engineering services for the Harding Avenue resurfacing project in an amount not to exceed $65,000 to be spent during the fiscal year 2016, '17 budget, and, two, an agreement between the village of the Grange Park and Hancock Engineering for designing construction engineering services for the 2017 street paving program in an amount not to exceed $225,000 for design engineering fees to be spent during the fiscal year 2016, '17 budget, and $258,000 for construction engineering fees for, during the fiscal year 2017, '18 budget. Seeing the documentation that we've had, and I would support this, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Sheen. Any comments from the board? Trustee Lottner?
Thank you, Mr. President. While I think that our village has been extremely pleased with the services for some years with Hancock Engineering, I would just raise the question, are we under any requirements for competitive bidding, given the level of amount and the value that we're talking about with these services? Is that something that we need to be aware of as a board, or take into consideration?
Yeah, the Illinois State statute does not allow us to bid out professional services on a price basis for engineers or architects, other professional design professionals. And so, under that, the village board has the authority to appoint the engineer, and that's what we do. So that's how it's done.
Okay, very good, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that we're on solid ground in that regard.
Any other comments? Amanda call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lottner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my, for tonight, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sheen. Okay, moving on to other reports, village manager Julia Sidio.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, December 7th, the village held two joint review board, JRB, meetings that are required by the TIF Act. Only, we had representatives from the library, District 102 and District 204 in attendance. The group together had several very good questions. Both joint review boards voted unanimously to approve the redevelopment plan areas. So the votes were unanimous, this was good news. So we have the green light in that regard to move forward from the JRB. And that's all I have to report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Julia. I did attend that meeting. And our staff, Emily, you did a fabulous job being chair. Our resident liaison is Topher, Topher Studwell, from the zoning board, he's our resident liaison. The gentleman from Lyons Township High School District was, really had some great questions. Kathy Orr presented it beautifully again, and it went really well, and everybody was in agreement, which was great to see. Thank you, Julia. Village clerk?
I have one item to report. The clerk's office is currently accepting candidate petitions for the April 4th municipal consolidate election until 5:00 PM on December 19th. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you, Amanda. I just have a couple of things. I wasn't able to attend the Christmas event on Saturday, but I heard that it was a great event again, Sherry, and thank you to the Business Association for all that you do. And it was a great event, and the chili I heard was great. We had a legislative breakfast this morning, again, sponsored by the Business Association, and Sherry did a great job there. We had five legislators show up. It was five, and then Tom Seraphin moderated. The kids played well together on stage. Getting a little testy there for a little bit, but very informative, and we had great attendance. So I hope the association is looking at making this an annual event, and again, thank you for representing our village so well, Sherry. Kathy is not with us tonight, her mother became ill, and so I hope that everything goes well, and have heard your thoughts. And thank you all for coming tonight. And moving on, Commercial Revitalization Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item this evening for discussion. But before I begin, I'd like to congratulate Chief Renovski on his recent retirement. I'm not going to tell you how long we go back to high school 10 or 15 years ago, so congratulations. The purpose of this is to reaffirm the village board's position to proceed with a 1% sales tax in the four proposed business development districts, otherwise known as BDDs. A little bit of background, in March 2016, the Development Consultants, S.B. Friedman, presented the findings of the TIF BDD feasibility study, and determined that all the village's commercial areas could potentially qualify for BDDs. In May of 2016, the village board engaged S.B. Friedman to assist with the implementation of two TIF districts and four business development districts. The use of TIF districts concurrent with the BDDs provides the village the optimal flexibility in encouraging reinvestment within the districts. Since TIF revenues are derived from the property tax, it may take several years for TIF funds to accrue revenue substantial enough to incentivize reinvestment within the districts. However, since BDD revenues are derived from sales tax, which is distributed quarterly to the village, BDD revenues will accrue more quickly. This provides the village with the potential to influence residential, I'm sorry, influence reinvestment redevelopment within the district almost immediately, whether through a sales tax sharing agreement, reimbursement of eligible site development costs, or other means permissible under state law. Sales tax rate. Under state law, the BDD, the village, has the ability to increase the sales tax rate within the business development districts by up to 1% in quarter percent increments, .25%, .5%, .75%. As part of the TIF BDD feasibility study, S.B. Friedman provided projected BDD revenues for each of the village's commercial areas. These projections, which assume a 1% additional tax rate, and I just lost my page, I apologize. I got it. Okay, I'm sorry about that. This provides the village with potential to influence reinvestment redevelopment within the BDD almost immediately, whether through a sales tax sharing agreement, reimbursement of eligible site development costs, or other means permissible under state law. Sales tax rate. Under state law, through the BDD, and I'm sorry, I'm going back a paragraph just to catch up, the village has the ability to increase sales tax rate within the BDD by up to 1% in quarter percent increments. As part of the TIF BDD feasibility study, S.B. Friedman provided projected BDD revenues for each of the village's commercial areas. These projections, which assume a 1% additional sales tax rate, are included on the following page. Additional details regarding these projections were included in the April 12, 2016 village board memo, which is attached. I'm not going to go through the projected revenue pieces, I think they're out there, and we can all get more by looking at them. The village's current sales tax rate is 9%. Staff has received the sales tax rate of several surrounding communities, a total of 19, 17 of which currently have a sales tax rates that are higher than the Grange Parks due to an existing local option sales tax. Should the village decide to implement a 1% tax in the proposed BDDs, bringing our total sales tax rate to 10%, only three communities would have lower rates, Western Springs, Hodgkins, Oak Brook. Cook County portion of this is 9.5%. Please see the attached for additional details. Implementation of the full 1%, okay, I'm sorry about that. Implementation of the full 1% would generate the most revenue within the BDD, thereby providing the village with the most flexibility when negotiating incentive package for reinvestment and development. Recommendation. Staff, in conjunction with the village's consultants, S.B. Friedman and Kathy Orr and Associates, recommends proceeding with a 1% sales tax in the proposed business development districts. It should also be noted that the Grange Park Chamber of Commerce has expressed their support for the village proceeding with a 1% sales tax increase in proposed business development districts. Action, this item is for discussion only. Staff is requesting the village board provide direction regarding the proposed increase in the sales tax rate under the proposed business development districts, so that we may provide guidance to the village's consultants regarding what rate to incorporate into the draft business development district documents. Attached is a chart of the surrounding sales tax rates in surrounding communities, and a village memorandum regarding prior conversations around tax increment financing T's feasibility study dated April 12th of 2016. At this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Assistant Manager Rodman to kind of review the, kind of that history and that memo, and where we've been, where we're coming from, and where we're going, and then I will continue discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, I'll try to keep this short, but just wanted to note that we began the discussion on the business development districts back in 2015, when we first decided to proceed with the feasibility study for the TIF. And actually, the premise for the business development district came from Kathleen Field Orr, who suggested that the village also think about implementing BDDs to complement the TIF process. So that's why the village decided to proceed with having S.B. Friedman look at the business development districts as part of the TIF feasibility study. Staff has had a number of conversations with our consultants, both S.B. Friedman and Kathleen Field Orr, about the business development districts, how we could potentially use the revenues from those areas to reinvest in the districts and support our business community. One of the things that Kathleen Orr shared with us that is quite common with business development districts is sales tax sharing agreements, or sales tax rebate agreements, whereby the village could incentivize a business coming in by agreeing to give them a portion or all of the business development district sales tax back for a period of time. Doing the 1% does allow for the greatest flexibility with that, it would still allow the village to keep the 1% that we get now, and would allow us to rebate back up to that full percent to a business coming in, which can make coming into our village look very attractive. Certainly, the projected revenues are in the memo, they're not, the revenues on an annual basis are not, I don't want to say that they're insignificant, because I do think they're significant enough that over time, they can certainly make certainly make a difference in the district. But at anything less than 1%, they do start to become insignificant in terms of the value they would have to businesses from a sales tax rebate perspective, or even in terms of what the village would be able to do if we wanted to provide some sort of matching grant for facade improvements and things like that. So with that, I think I will turn it back over to Trustee Cussera, but certainly, if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Assistant Manager Rodman. I have a few comments to make regarding the, this whole process, and where we're at, and where we'd like to, where we'd like to be. I think this really started when this board got together four years ago, almost four years ago, with our first meeting and think session that was led by Village Manager Cilio. And we decided what we wanted to accomplish as a board, and what this board should be, or we wanted to be about. And there were a number of priorities that came out, and I think the first priority was transparency. We want to be honest with our residents, we want input from our residents, and we want to discuss everything in an open and professional manner as a board. Second piece was infrastructure. I think every time anybody goes to Jewel or anywhere else in the village, conversation comes up around street improvement and infrastructure. So that was a top priority. And a third priority, which, you know, I think we hear about most often, is business development. And that completely enveloped with safety as a priority for a village. So with that being done and decided upon, I think after our second or third Commercial Revitalization Committee, we started talking about TIF. And out of conversation with Kathleen Fieldor and S.B. Friedman, that business development districts were a great opportunity, we wanted to be able to include everybody in the village. And then all of these leading to quality of life for our community, our residents, and property value, which is naturally very, very important. Fortunately, we've seen great increase in property values, we continue to see that, and as we continue to focus on those priorities, I think we will see even more, with more people coming into the village and existing residents spending literally multi-millions of dollars on property improvement. Tax increase. I am not in favor of a tax increase. I don't believe in tax increases, because to me, that's saying I want more money to do, to do something with that does not provide any value. I think all of us living in Cook County, living in Illinois, we hear about the waste, we hear about money being spent inappropriately and not where it's supposed to. I don't know how many tax increases we've seen in the state of Illinois, in Cook County, to reduce pension costs, and not a dime has gone to reducing those pension costs. You know, going back to this, to this village board, there's not a dime of revenue that isn't put back into this community and wasted. So, you know, tax increases should go to the residents and the people that they most Business community. This is put in place for the business community to improve, give them an opportunity to invest more, to increase our business districts, which I think improves quality of life. When we're working and we see residents move in, they want a place to go with their kids. They want a place to go with their grandkids. I'm sorry, President Cipio, I looked at you and said grandkids, and didn't want to age us.
Boy, I've reached that point already, huh?
But very, very seriously, about 20 years ago, I had the opportunity to manage a branch in Riverside for LaSalle Bank. And I'd always been in Brookfield, and I went to a La Grange Park Business Association meeting. There were about five or six people across the table, I knew a couple of them, and right after I introduced myself, a couple of people said, "What are you doing here? What are you doing here?" And I said, "Well, what do you mean? I'm a local businessman, I live, you know, grew up in Brookfield. Well, what are you doing here? You're not part of La Grange Park." So I said, "Okay, this is going to be uphill battle," and we moved on. You know, the business community in La Grange Park is serious right now. I think we've seen that through a business association that the president of the Now Chamber converted to. We have a great chamber here, very active. The breakfast this morning, I'm sorry I couldn't attend, but gosh darn, our business community brought out two state senators and three state representatives, and 70 people for breakfast at 7:30 in the morning. Thank you, Sherri, for being here. It's a long, long day, Sherri. I'm sorry, 7:00. So looking at the additional revenues needed to support the business development districts, it's going to a group of people that is and does want to improve the village of La Grange Park and every avenue that I've already discussed. So with that, can I kind of go back to the beginning of the memo, that we wanted, you know, discuss a reaffirmation of prior discussions in moving forward with the business development districts and funding them through a 1% sales increase. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Trustee Roger?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of questions regarding timing of this. Is there a time-critical point at which we have to make a decision? I know this is for planning purposes, I understand that, so that some projections can be done as we move forward for the reports and the recommendations, and it would be for planning purposes only at this point. We're not discussing any motions, nor any, anything to be approved that would take effect in a certain timeframe. But going forward, is there a certain time at which we would be restricted, given the business development discussions, the BDD discussions that are going on? Is there, you know, it has to take place at the beginning of a year, or a certain amount of time after a BDD is approved? A little bit of clarification in that regard.
Well, the purpose of the discussion tonight is so that the village board and the village staff can provide direction to our consultants, S.B. Friedman and Kathleen Fieldor, as they prepare the necessary documents for the business development districts in order to move forward. They do need that direction very quickly, because we have, in accordance with the timeline that the board discussed in the November 8 meeting, we are planning on introducing the business development district documents at the January 24 meeting. So the January 10 meeting would not give them enough time. If we didn't provide them feedback until the January 10 work session, that would not give them enough time to incorporate everything into the required documents. So we need to give them some feedback as a result of this meeting in order for them to move forward. That being said, it's not an approval by the board at this point by any means. Nothing is approved until you actually approve the ordinances that adopt the business development districts. That, in accordance with the timeline, is slated to occur at the second meeting in February, which I think is, I don't know what it is off the top of my head. So it would be the fourth Tuesday in February, which is when the board, right now, would consider those ordinances approving the business development districts, and the sales tax rate would need to be established as part of that ordinance.
I'm sorry, Trustee Roger. Emily, could you please, I think part of the question too, could you explain why we decided to go now?
Oh, with the business development districts?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So initially, the board may recall, we had talked about implementing, or proceeding with implementation of the TIF districts first, and once that process was entirely complete, move forward with implementation of the business development districts, which would mean that based on the filing deadlines with the Illinois Department of Revenue, the sales tax increase, whatever the amount, would not go into effect until January 1, 2018. However, we recently became aware that a vacant piece of property, the pancake, the former Pancake House site on La Grange Road, has been listed for sale by the owner, and that is obviously one of the areas that the village would like to see redeveloped. And one of the reasons that we've been looking at doing TIF and business development districts is so that we can influence how property is redeveloped. So given the fact that the property is for sale now, staff had the discussion with the village board in November about moving the timeline forward with the business development districts, so that we would have revenue coming in much sooner. The sales tax rate will go into effect if they are approved. In accordance with the timeline, it would go into effect July 1 of 2017, which would allow us to start receiving revenues before the end of the year, and potentially have the ability to have some influence over how that property develops. So that's why we've pushed the timeline up a little bit, and there's a little bit of overlap with some of the TIF discussion. But that's also, I think, why staff feels it's important to be looking at the 1% sales tax, because that really does give us the most flexibility in terms of negotiating redevelopment or reinvestment in these areas. Does that answer all your questions?
Not all of them.
Okay, keep going.
But it does answer the first part of it. But let's say that you received the direction from the board this evening to proceed with a anticipated 1% sales tax increase. Then assuming that the BDD would be approved and all that got put in place, is there anything that could change that? Let's say that, I'm just coming up, let's say that there's, well, public opinion says that, gee, with all the sales, all the tax fatigue that we're experiencing with all the referendums that have passed, and the bond issue, is there any provision for, say, well, okay, then considering all of that, then it won't be a full 1%. Let's say that we would back to a half percent. Is there any flexibility in that? Or once we give you the direction, is that it?
Honestly, I don't know the answer to that question for sure. I don't think there is without going through the process again, but I will double-check that with our attorney. Yeah, I think you have to go through the process again, whether it's to increase the rate or decrease it.
It is an area that, you know, I think there's certainly a lot of advantages that we've talked through here, but from the standpoint of increasing taxes, the timing is a little concerning with everything that we've, I think, as residents have been hit with regarding, certainly all, you know, very, very positive improvements, and a lot of very positive things that are going on in the village, but by the same token, you know, it is a continuation of more tax, more tax, more tax, and I'm concerned that we may not necessarily get the support from our residents that we would hope that we would, you know, certainly, and understanding and appreciative, and I think it makes sense that the businesses are certainly supportive, although I certainly wouldn't want to create something that would be counter-competitive, you know. But I understand that it would be, you know, all the other villages around us, pretty much we'd be, we'd be right in step with the rest of the villages. So I do have a slight concern of resident impact providing that direction.
I have not received any direct feedback from residents, have not been contacted by any residents as a result of what's gone out in e-briefs, or what's available on the website, or any of the village outreach. The one thing that I do think is important to note that Trustee Cussera mentioned earlier is that the sales tax increase, the revenues that are generated from the increase, do go back into the districts that they're generated from. And so I think from a resident perspective, there is a significant value to that, because there is a guarantee that that money will be reinvested in their community, in physical improvements in their community. So it's not money that the village can use for salaries, or pensions, or anything else. And so I do think that does help residents and businesses see the value in that increase. And also just wanted to reiterate that that 1% would not be applied to things like food, groceries, things like that. It doesn't get applied to anything. Cars, yes. So it would not impact residents in terms of grocery bills and things like that. Just, I think you already know that, but just to clarify.
I think it's important to hear that again. I think that your point is well-taken, that it will be very important in this entire process to make sure, just like you did with the bond issue, the road issue, exactly what it's for, what's the timeframe. I know we won't know the timeframe on the sales tax, but we were very specific as to what that bond issue monies would be covering, and I think that will be very critical here to indicate how these funds will be used, and, you know, maybe informally, that they can't be used for anything other than that. Thank you. That answers my question. That answers my questions.
Thank you, Trustee Roger. Sorry for interjecting at that point. Trustee Rockel?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things, a couple of questions. One is regarding the tax, the 1% versus, I know that one of the reasons why it gives us a better bargaining position in terms of inviting new businesses in, that we could then give them the 1% rebate, I'm, is that counterproductive? I guess the question is, in terms of if we had it at 9.75, you know what I mean, a lower rate than, you know, showing that we're competitive, or lower than other surrounding communities, not all of them. I know that Oak Brook is 9.5, and Western Springs, I think, is nine. But, you know, most of them are 10% in our surrounding communities, so we would be in line with them. But does that, keeping it at 9.75, is that an incentive for businesses just to see that our tax rate is lower, that that's something that they would be incentivized to even come in, where we might be better off just keeping everything at 9.75, you know, showing some kind of competition, you know, that we would gain it that way, you know, the appeal? Or is that, I know the Freeman discussed, I guess, but...
Well, I think that's a, I think that's a fair point. All of the research that we've done, and, you know, the feedback we've gotten through our discussions with S.B. Friedman, and even just sort of informal surveys of our residents and staff as to where they're shopping, and areas and things like that, is that for the most part, the sales tax rate does not impact where people shop. So unless they're making a significant purch, a very significant purchase, they tend to not even know what sales tax rate they're paying, and certainly aren't going to, you know, drive an extra 10 minutes, or an extra 20 minutes to pay a half a percent less. People tend to be much more convenience-oriented, and a large difference in sales tax rate, say, between, you know, maybe ordering something on Amazon where you pay nothing, and ordering something on a website where you would pay the full local percent, that may make a difference. But in terms of people's, you know, daily behaviors, a quarter percent, you know, the research shows that that quarter percent doesn't make a difference. Now, on the other side, does that make a difference to businesses?
The businesses, correct.
Coming in? You know, I think that, I think that's a fair question. I think probably the best indication of how businesses feel about it is the feedback that you got from Sherri Sauer, the chamber president, who is an existing business, and, you know, has indicated that that 1%, you know, she still sees a benefit to that and doesn't feel that that's putting her at a competitive disadvantage. So I don't want to speak for every business out there, but what we've heard from our business community, and what I've heard from the businesses at all the chamber meetings, is that they are supportive of that full 1%. They have not indicated that they feel that puts them at a competitive disadvantage with neighboring towns. And I suspect that businesses coming in may feel the same way, and would see that they too could benefit from the business development district revenue. There would be a potential for them to receive funding through that program as well.
Thank you. And I still, a couple more questions. To expand on the food, the tax on the food, so I think I need the clarification. You know, as Bob said, you know, thank you for clarifying for the residents, but for myself, I, myself and the residents of that, is, so this doesn't apply to food? Can you clarify that for me? Because I don't remember that portion of it. You're saying it only taxes...
So it doesn't apply to basically groceries, so packaged food that you purchase and you take off-site. So it would apply to a restaurant that you go and you eat food that they prepare for you, but it does not apply to a loaf of bread, or a gallon of milk, or something that you purchase and take home for consumption off-site.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, prescription drugs.
It doesn't include alcohol either? I'm surprised. You know? And then, the other question or thought I had is, I know we did this with the, and maybe this is, we need to move on.
I'm sorry, it doesn't include alcohol?
I was thinking, yeah, because that's not like a necessity. For some people, it may be.
I thought it was enough of a sentence, but it doesn't like alcohol?
Thank you. And I know we did this and maybe it's a hassle and maybe it's not worth the time, but I feel like I want to, I guess I am cautious too because of the fact, I want to support the business community and I think this is, you know, this is a way for us to get a little head start, jumpstart in terms of the funds, but it is a little, it is concerning, in fact, that we've already asked, you know, the village, the residents to support us with the referendums and, you know, in the school district. So, I, we just, you know, you're concerned about even the sound of it, even though it's pennies, just that sound that, oh, gosh, here they are, they're hitting us up again. So, and I don't know if it's worth it, but I'm wondering, I guess I'm looking for a pulse. I mean, I know it's not something that goes to vote, but a pulse from the citizens, and I know that you're saying that we've gotten, you know, they got the e-briefs and we haven't really gotten any response. And I know that we did this with the garbage cans when we considered changing whether we were going to go to contract, you know, with recycling cans. I'm wondering if there's, and maybe the time doesn't allow us because we're too short, we're short of time, and I can appreciate that we were moving forward because of the reasons that you stated. But I'm wondering if there's some kind of thing we could put out a request in the e-briefs or something, that we're looking for input from the residents, just to get a sense of the pulse from the residents of how they feel towards us, knowing that the business community is supporting it, knowing that the money is going to go to directly back into the business community to support, you know, which is great. So, it answers that question, where the tax dollars are going to. That's one of the things that, you know, I was thinking as I was reading that I would like, gosh, I wish I had a sense of the pulse of what the residents felt.
Well, certainly, we are continuing our outreach efforts and we have the rose clippings that'll be coming out in January, and we have information on the business development districts that will go out in that. You know, would, we could do some sort of survey through e-briefs or through the website if that's, you know, what the board wanted us to do. The challenge with that, again, is the timing because we wouldn't get, you know, the feedback on that in a quick enough to be able to provide the direction to S.B. Friedman. And the other concern I have with that is that it's not just residents that are paying the sales tax. I mean, we have lots of other people that come from outside our community that shop in the community as well that also pay it. So, I want to make sure that we don't color this as a burden just on residents, you know, we have other people that'll be paying.
No, in fact, exactly to your point, as I'm glad you brought that up because that's another fact that would be, you know, the things that would be presented to the residents, that it's not necessarily an impact on the residents, it's an impact on the people who are purchasing within the community. We see that, we're saying that it doesn't really have a spending impact where people buy, whether it was 1% difference. We do know that the business community likes it. But with that being said, you know, that, you know, do the residents still feel like that's a good thing, you know?
I guess what I mean by that is that I don't know that the results from a survey would be truly reflective of the people that are paying the sales tax because it's going to be a very limited pool of people and certainly not everybody that's shopping at our businesses.
But that's who I'm concerned about.
Right.
The residents, you know.
A couple of, a couple of things I'll make mention of. One is an anecdotal story. So, every time I go to Ace Hardware, I talk to the folks that are shopping there and I ask them where they're coming from. I can't recall I ever talked to anybody from La Grange Park. That's just one anecdotal story that I'll tell you. Every time I talk to a resident about the TIF districts on the phone, I may, I took the opportunity to talk about the business development districts and the potential for a 1% to gauge their sentiment. By the time we were done with our phone call, they were supportive. So, and I've had a lot of conversations. We've talked to Ace Hardware, we've talked with the businesses on 31st Street. I talked to the corporate government affairs manager for 7-Eleven, talked to her, she's got, they have stores all over Cook County, DuPage County, Will, downtown Chicago. So, we had a long discussion about it as well. The one of the, one of the things I would say based upon having all these conversations with folks is, once you give the information and you give them the background about what's going on, what's happening, and that the results of the feasibility studies show that we're kind of behind the eight ball here in what's going on in La Grange Park in terms of commercial revitalization, reinvestment, redevelopment, reinvestment into the business, you know, the businesses, the structures, you know, the quality of the stock of the buildings that we have for businesses to move into. It's really tough for us to get businesses onto 31st Street because so many of the buildings are not up to code and it may, there's a huge gap for potential businesses to come in and be able to reinvest so that they can put their business in La Grange Park because they really want to be here. And there's a gap there, and the gap, we're trying to figure out how it can be filled. And a business development district allows that opportunity. But in these conversations that I have with residents and businesses, it's a conversation. And I guess the thought of doing a survey may not necessarily allow for that conversation and that level of understanding because if people don't really understand why we're doing it and all the facts behind it and kind of the story as part of that, they're just going to be afraid of the tax itself. You know, they hear the word tax and they don't know that it's a reinvestment back into their community. You know, they, it's easy to be dismissive, but it's not just a 1% local sales tax, it's a reinvestment to each one of these business districts. But we have an opportunity to educate the residents in the upcoming rose clippings. So, we can do a survey, it's easy for us to put together a survey, we can certainly do that. I would just caution that a survey is really going to be the best instrument or method for getting feedback from the residents, and it's not necessarily the people that are going to be paying the tax. Because we have, you know, somewhere between 24,000 and 30,000 cars on La Grange Road a day and probably around 20,000 on 31st Street. But maybe we can do a series, what we could do is we could do a series of meetings at Village Hall where we get the feedback. We could do a survey, we would just have to organize it or formulate it in a way that provides significant education on it. But in my, in the course of my conversations with folks, there's a lot of discussion, they understand where we're coming from. Some of the feedback that we get is, it'd be great to diversify our, you know, the revenue base and not have it all fall onto the residents. So, that's some of the feedback I got, they understood it. But certainly, that's just an indicator of the folks that were interested enough in the TIF to call Village Hall and find out, you know, what's going on, how will I be impacted? And it gave an opportunity for the conversation. But it may not be reflective of, you know, the entire population. But those are just some ideas I have for giving feedback. Maybe we want to do similar to what we did for the TIF and have an open house where we can, you know, explain that we're having a forum and they can come down and hear a presentation on it, and then they can ask questions and give us their feedback. But we certainly could do a survey as part of the rose clippings as well.
But that also, that all is after the fact in terms of time. I mean, I know we still, it's not up for motion until April, but it's after the fact of what we're asking S.B. Friedman to move forward with, correct? I mean, it's not...
You know, I guess it...
I'm here, yeah. Is there, I guess, I guess this is where, because I'm, I feel somewhat comfortable, I almost, even the timeframe now that we've had this discussion and this discussion is, you know, televised, even April 10th is the work session where you're looking, I guess, where we're looking to move forward with it. Well, there was something, April, April 20, I'm sorry, no, January 10th, what was January, the January 10th work session if we...
We're planning to do a rose clippings informative piece similar to what...
So, that when we first talked about this issue, the board requested that we include educational informational materials much like what we did for the, for the referenda. So, we put the first piece together on the TIF and we included that in the last rose clippings edition. So, we have another rose clippings supplemental to come out this winter on the business development district.
And Emily is ready to talk. All right. I just, I brought the timeline with me, so I have it here.
There was something, January 10th you were presenting with us, I thought.
January 10th is actually the public hearings for the TIF. And then, January 24th is when the board will consider the ordinances for the TIF. But January 24th is also the date that the village board would review the plans for the business development district. So, that's when they will first be presented, is January 24th with consideration and action by the board anticipated for February 28th.
So, I guess what I'm thinking is, is just to, I know, we've got the January 10th work session though, right? Is that, did I get that right? Okay. And January 26th, the board meeting, that's when you're going to present the...
24th, yes.
Okay. Even to, I guess I almost want to say, I want to put, I want to kind of, what's the word I wasn't looking for? Reserve how I feel until the January 10th meeting. I just would be interested to see if you get, after this discussion, if we get feedback that may influence.
If the board doesn't make a decision on, or doesn't provide guidance, I should say, to S.B. Friedman on what rate to include until the January 10th work session...
It's too late.
That is too late for us to proceed with the timeline as the board indicated they wanted to proceed in November and maybe too late to get the business development districts in place for July 1.
Okay, so tonight's the night.
Tonight is ideally the night, yes, but as I mentioned in response to trustee Lotner's question, it's not the final decision, so...
No, but it's, if we say yes, we're committing to it, I mean, otherwise, it's a lot of work we're spinning wheels for...
And staff doesn't mean to push the board into this decision. I think it's, you know, we were under the impression that the board was comfortable with the 1%. So, that's what brought us to this point. So, we don't want you to feel that we're, you know, rushing you to a decision. And certainly, the board can reevaluate the timeline for proceeding as well. I mean, it's entirely your decision.
I get you. And I'm sorry, and I thank you very much for allowing these questions. Julia, I know you said you have different conversations with people contacted, these have not only been the businesses but also residents who've been interested in TIF and you're, after the discussion, you're getting a feeling that they do have a sense of, this is a good thing.
Right. I did not personally talk to, I did not personally receive any phone calls from businesses on the TIF, just residents, just homeowners.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rockel. Moving on, trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to say that I do understand the other trustees' concerns, but I feel like this village, I mean, we should be committed to advancing the village. And growing up in this area, not necessarily in La Grange Park, I felt like we've always been lacking. And doing this TIF district and the 1% possibility of the increase is only going to improve our village and our image. So, I think that's important for the residents and for people who come to this town or who want to come to this town. So, I think the benefits of the 1% definitely outweigh the concerns. In my mind, I mean, I don't think as a, as a young family with several children, we're pretty cost-conscious and this 1% is not going to make me go elsewhere to shop because that 1% is going to be going towards the village. So, to me, that's more important than the pennies that I'm going to be saving. So, honestly, that won't affect my purchasing decisions. And the residents that I've spoken to about the TIF district are very excited because I think they feel, as I do, that they want the village to change in a different direction. So, I mean, I'm for the percent increase. I want development to come in as an architect and a resident, and I think we need it. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zora. Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of great comments from some pretty smart people up here. I'm very fortunate to serve with them all. I've got, I'll make it as brief as I can, but one thing, a common theme to anybody who's watched me for too many years up here, everything I try to do is looking, I have complete faith in this board and the staff here, I always try to look out 20 years because this is a 23-year decision this time. So, how is it going to be, we can't, we can't know 100% the future, but how is it going to be used in the future? That always weighs into how I think. Tax is tax. We can call it revenue enhancement, we can call it reinvestment, it's a tax. And at what point is the tipping point? I like that this will be reinvested, if we use that word, in the community. But what is the tipping point? Because the county just put this on soda here, after a while, people just make, quit shopping as much. It does, it's not a, I don't see it as a reverse thing either. It's not just going to be outside people. So, it's also going to affect our residents, just more same. As I said, we sometimes use too many buzzwords. I think we should have had this discussion months ago instead of, I get concerned when we are pressed into quick decisions because this window's closing because we've had a lot of that in the last year especially. So, you know, sometimes we should, we should, I know that the Pancake House property just came up, but it's just, we don't know what's going in there. If we are going to take advantage, for instance, of the revenue sharing, if we're sharing revenue, giving, taxing the people and giving it back to the business who invest here, how is it going to help the other businesses? It's not. It's not, we're giving it back to them for a certain period maybe. So, are we guessing that 10 years from now it'll pay off? These are not necessarily all my feelings, these are questions that we all need to address because I don't have the answers to them necessarily. Anecdotally on Ace Hardware, I don't know the last time I went in there, I didn't run into somebody I personally know. So, it's not like, it's a lot of residents out of town. I run into people I personally know and a bunch of residents I don't know in there on a daily basis. So, again, these are, if we're looking at all sides, you know, what is it? We have been, I said, we have been, we've been taxed beyond belief here, and we live in Illinois and Cook County. So, that, again, the perception that some of my fellow trustees spoke to, you know, I personally, it wouldn't affect me, I trust the business community, I support the business community, I want people to shop. I'm trying to look out 20 years, I'm trying to look to guess how because I represent everybody in this town. I'm trying to get, like trustee Rockel had said, I'd like a better read and we, you know, we really haven't had a chance. We're having this discussion now so we can give direction, even though we're not going to vote on it for a while. So, at that point, and last thing, the Pancake House property, I've, what if they sell it to somebody who builds an office building? So, we're going to incent this for somebody who's going to bring no tax, you know? We don't know what the reinvestment's going to end up in, so that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Messick. Trustee Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Everybody brings good points forward. I, trustee Zora, I'd like to see redevelopment, you know? Nobody likes paying taxes. And you're right, they are going up, but I think of how's it going to affect the neighborhood, how's it going to affect the businesses around it? And I think back not too long ago that Mariano's in Westchester, yeah, they were given, there was incentives, but you think of how that lot at Westchester Commons would be if nothing went in there. And Westchester's at 10% tax total, and you walk around the parking lot and there's a lot of tags from other towns. People are coming into that area, they're spending money. A lot of us know Surmaeck Road, not that many years ago, the lots were empty, stores were closing through the TIF, some incentives given, I'm sure, but you go up and down Surmaeck Road and businesses are thriving, people are, you know, businesses are wanting to relocate there. And I have to think with the 255 or 260 apartments that are set to come online here right around the corner, saving foot traffic and people are going to spend the money local. So, I, we need to move forward and not look back.
Thank you, trustee Sheen. Will?
The bridge, you commission also, you may...
Thank you. I have some comments, and then Julia, I think you had, you had to end with, you know, we talked about this for almost a year now. And part of the goal of the commercial revitalization committee was to improve our business districts and improve our commercial environment. And what I heard for the past couple of years was, well, we've got to improve our sales tax, we've got to get more sales tax, we've got to get more to improve this. And the beauty of the business district, what we decided upon to look into was that they're putting, the community's putting their trust in us. We showed that by the referendums. We showed that by the referendum. We believe that by, by doing this, we're not penalizing our community, but what we're doing is taking the money that we're going to get and put it into the business district on projects that we approve. Not that, that we're going to get a office building in there and we're going to give them money because they're an office building, it's, we're going to incentivize what we want to go in there to. And if, if it's something that we feel is worthwhile, we're not obligated to do anything except give it to where we think it's needed. When you improve your businesses, even the facades, the businesses around you all get an advantage over that because it creates a better environment for that section, for that block, for that area. And everybody wants other businesses to look like theirs do. Some people can't afford to do that, hopefully this could be an incentive to get down that path. But when I hear the businesses say, well, you know what, they got to clean up their office front or they got to do this because it doesn't look good and I'm trying to keep mine up, this is a way to do that, not only improve the business community but make our community look better. I don't think that the 1% is going to jeopardize our standing with our community. We are put to the task of improving our community. We can't pick money off trees and we can't devise ways to increase our revenue at this point that are significant in the monies that we need for our community. This is an option, this is something that we've looked at that, yes, okay, we've got our roads taken care of now, the village spoke and said, yes, we want you to take care of our roads. Now we're looking at our business community. How can we improve our business community without taking monies that we don't have and then maybe jeopardizing cutting staff or cutting salaries or doing this or that? It's going to come to a point where it's going to be an issue. It really is. We're sitting well, we're doing great, but, but things are changing. They're more costly and we don't have the resources. We're obligated to the pensions and Julia and I talked, I don't want to not give to our pensions, we have to do that, that's our obligation. Well, it costs a lot of money to do that. And we're not getting any new revenues in to support that. So we're looking at ways, Chief has brought up maybe Revlon cameras, maybe other ways that we can increase revenues to support what's being placed upon us. And, you know, if we can get some help, which our community wants us to improve, if we can get some help to do this and make our business districts better and happy and influence other businesses to come in and say, oh, look what La Grange Park is doing. Other communities are doing it with 10%. We should be doing that too. And, and our community hopefully is going to see that there's a good board, there's a working board that looks at ways to be creative and come up with funding that they don't have to improve or go after our property tax anymore or do this or do that. I mean, the time they come, we're going to have to do that. But I think if we exhaust all the chances that we have to get monies from other avenues and, and improve the areas that we, Commercial Revitalization Committee was obligated to do, and we've talked about this for months, the timing is such that we felt we can get money sooner now if we act upon it. It's not something we brought up in November or December and said, let's talk about a business district. We talked about this. The advantage to doing it now is that we can begin to get funds coming in sooner so we can distribute it quicker. I mean, we can wait till November and, and then we're looking at 2018 to get any funds for it. So we're not pressed to do it. But the purpose was to bring it forward to the board so that we can get this process going. We're not going to give TIF money for probably three years? About three years? So staff came up with the suggestion, well, maybe we can push this up a little bit so we can start getting some monies in to start implementing into our business districts. And I think, you know, this board is a great board, look at what you guys have done, you know? We passed two referendums. And it wasn't done because people thought, yeah, you know, we do narrow rows, but they did it because they trust your decisions. And you have put faith in them. We're not, we're being transparent, we're not doing anything that we shouldn't be doing. We're looking at ways, we all live here. We're looking at ways to make our community better. And this is one little tool that we have available to us to use. And, you know, we've, we've talked about this and if, if it was against the residents' wishes, I've got firmly believe some of the ones out there that really look close to what we're doing would have come forward and said, what are you guys doing? You're going to tax us again on this business district? Nobody's come forward. I think we're doing the right thing, I know we're doing the right thing. And we're being thorough about it and timely and transparent. Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Gosh darn, I really appreciate all the, all the feedback tonight and thank village manager, Cecilia Owen, assistant village manager, in their, in their help with these. Kind of to close and kind of my final, final thoughts on this are really two things. And one, as President DiCipio had mentioned, I think our residents want this. Timeframe, yeah, everything seems to move very quickly, especially this time of, this time of the year. And I think at the last board meeting or the prior meeting, we decided and voted to move up the timeline to, to get tax revenues going into this year. And I think especially from the, the business community, if we're going into January of 18, we're missing the, the fourth quarter of every year, which is by far the, the biggest opportunity and where people spend the most, the most money. At least I know Karen does. Secondly, I'm a numbers guy. If I spent $15,000 in La Grange Park next year, it's going to cost me $150. I think we made some comments about a year or so ago when there were some highlights in the paper about the town saying that, you know, La Grange has all these places to go and we're this, just this great community to, to live in, but we should have more places to go. I'm not sure if that was Forbes or, or the Tribune or whoever it was. I hope in a couple of years, by attracting business and, and increasing business and attracting new businesses, I can spend $15,000 in La Grange Park. I'm not, you know, and I think that's a big, big part of this. So from a number situation, how much is it costing our residents and non-residents? Sherry, I'm not sure if you'll agree, but we talk about money coming in from out of town. Been in Chambers for a number of years and I think everybody remembers a few years ago that a big piece in Chambers was shop local. Well, in actuality is, you don't want people to shop local. Because if people shop locally, we never see anybody from out of town and, and vice versa. So from a, a business standpoint, it's, it's important that we, we have businesses that attract people from all over. We're good? Okay.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you. The last piece is regarding discussion tonight. And there's been a lot of discussion and we're, we're making a decision to ask our staff to take, to take further action. And a lot of discussion has been around, around staff and what they need to do. And I greatly appreciate that. But at the same time, I think I look at my decision-making as not the direction that we have to give to, to staff, but direction that our, our village residents, our village businesses want us to take and want us to do for them. And then, then direct our great staff to, to take action on that. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. One more point, we had the legislative breakfast this morning. There's been talk that maybe there isn't going to be a budget for two years. And it could be planned or applied by some individuals to just wait until the two years is up and get a new governor in. The distributor, we don't know the status, we were told that we will get the 911 and all these other things, but we're in a precarious situation. Our residents know that. So we have to be creative and look at other ways. I just feel it's the right thing to do, it's of value to our business district and that's why we decided to do this in the first place. So with that, Will, any other comments from any trustees?
Thank, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I, you know, considering everyone's comments and the discussion here, which I think has been excellent, I think I would come down on the side of maybe not being 100% in support of the, of the 1%. But I think with the discussion we've had this evening and I think with the opportunity of a, of a new additional, addition of Rose Clippings, that will be the opportunity to explain how it will be used and where the money would go, I would be comfortable with, with supporting, providing direction to proceed. And I think we all talked about the importance of the timing if we're going to do something. I know it's, it always feels like there's never enough time, we want, we, do we have to do this right now, right now? But I, I think that there is some opportunity to get resident feedback that will give us enough of a, of a comfort zone of whether it's going to be significant resident feedback on this or they will see how, as we did with the, with the, with the bond issues, how the monies will be used that I think will, will hopefully provide support and, and comfort for the direction that we're taking here. So I, I would support a, a direction to staff to proceed from a planning purpose point of view with the 1%.
I mean, what does S.B. Friedman looking for? Just direction to move forward and give us information back? Or are they looking for kind of a commitment?
It's a number for them to include in, in the draft plan, for them to run projections on, things like that. But as I mentioned earlier, the board's not, not approving it until they approve it in February. So if for some reason we, we got feedback from the community as a result of the Rose Clippings, or conversations with them and things like that that indicated the board wanted to scale that back to another amount, you know?
That's what I want to hear, okay.
We can send S.B. Friedman back to the drawing board and tell them, you know, you've got to do this really fast, we need these numbers.
Okay. Yeah, and again, we're not obligated to do anything, we can wait.
Right, exactly.
But I think it's just an opportunity that we would, if we're, if we're looking at it anyway, we want to get it going. Trustee Rocco?
I support that, I think that was well said, thank you.
Trustee Sheen? Trustee Zora?
I'm in agreement.
Trustee Messick?
Since it's not a final decision, absolutely. Go ahead.
Thank you, Trustee Casera.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, new business, just Chief, you, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Trustee Rocco.
Was there another item? I thought there was another item.
That's okay. Chief, did you, and he's gone, Will is gone now, I'm sorry.
No, hey, yeah, I meant to interject earlier and I apologize, but some of the questions, I know we ask him or ask Will and the Youth Commission how they feel and it's easy to reply that they're consensus or they're unanimous. You know, last night during our discussions, they did ask about the ambulance and actually they had some pointed questions, one of the youth commissioners, about certain chassis and how long it'll last. So I didn't want, you know, it's not that they take this lightly, it was pretty interesting. So I just wanted to, some of the same questions that came up, came up from the Youth Commissioner.
That's awesome.
So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Chief. Any new business? Motion to move into executive session?
I make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining in accordance with five ILCS 120 slash two C2, not to return to open session until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And before we do, just on behalf of the board and the staff, we want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy holiday season, health and happiness to everyone. Thank you. Move into exec.